The reorganization meeting of the East Islip School District Board of Education is called to order at 7:06 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is founded, one nation, under God, in the ideal of liberty and justice for all.
Now the oath will be administered to the Superintendent of Schools.
Can you last it?
I, John Dolan, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Superintendent of Schools according to the best of my ability.
Great. Find that place. You are pretty good. Thank you. I am requesting nominations for the position of Board President for the 2022-2023 school year.
Chris, I like nominee Chris Zachary. Second.
Is he Mr. Ruland, second?
Yes.
We have a motion made by Mr. Carfluck, seconded by Mr. Ruland, to appoint Mr. Zachary to the position of Board President. Are there any other nominations? Now? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I am requesting nominee, oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
President of the Board.
I, Chris Zachary, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
I am requesting nominations for the position of Vice President of the Board of Education for the 2022-2023 school year.
I nominate Michael Dorgan.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Ruland, seconded by Mr. Carfluck, to appoint Michael Dorgan to the position of Vice President. Are there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Mr. Dorgan?
Do you mind?
We gotta switch seats.
If you could stop it, please.
Michael Dorgan, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President of Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Okay. Let me see.
Mike, I'm gonna log out, all right?
Okay. Good evening. Just as a note, Mr. Tim Sason was sworn in on Friday, July 1st, so congratulations to Tim on joining the Board, and congratulations to Mr. Dorgan on your election as Vice President. Okay. We resolve that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education presides the second Thursday of each month as the date of the regular monthly meetings except as noted on the attached calendar for the Board of Education business and workshop meetings for the 22-23 school year. Take it in motion.
Motion.
Discussion. Occasionally, we may have to change the meetings due to certain other things going on in the district, the availability of the Board and administration, so this is a rough schedule, but for the most part, we hold to it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 There was no second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consent agenda items, 10-1 to 12-4. Anybody want anything pulled out from the consent agenda? Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And this used to take hours, so, especially with the reorg, just appointing the auditors, the claims auditor, the controller, or 403B plan administrator, all those things. This is all available online. The last thing, any of you who want to sit here and go through this, so they're all on there for view. Again, it's just all the appointments for the year, hearing offices, our homeless liaison, these are all the things that are listed here in the reorg. So by doing the consent agenda, we save about an hour just me reading to you. 13-1. Yes, this has, we didn't get the chance to discuss this with Mr. Sason as far as what committees you'd like to be on in discussing that. Stephanie Joann, yeah, can we table this until August and then give the Board a chance to discuss it? I mean, most of this will probably stay on most of the committees that are on, but if anything is gonna be switched around, we'd like to discuss it with Mr. Sason. Okay. All right. Motion to table 13.1.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Now, we resolve that the Board of Education moves to the regular business meeting. Take it in motion to do that.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. agenda items after the Superintendent's report. One of those members whose names and addresses are listed on the sign-in sheet available prior to the start of the meeting will be recognized during new business. The Chairperson will limit discussions of any item by the public to three minutes in order for the Board to expeditiously conduct its business. Anybody want to discuss anything on the agenda items? Okay. Mr. Dolan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zachary. Just briefly, a couple of updates. We are, you know, we are thankful to the community, they supported the Capital Reserve, that work is beginning, you know, and we're hopeful, it looks like we're gonna be able to get the RCK playground in and the basketball court in before the end of the summer, but please, when you're coming to the buildings, just be aware, the high school lobbies are being redone, and we will be, again, we're finishing up some of the bond work, and we are also beginning to roll into the Capital Reserve over the next several months. I would like to upfront thank, we're serviced by three volunteer fire departments, Great River, East Islip, and Islip Terrace. You know, we are truly appreciative of all that they do for us. You know, we've said to them on numerous occasions, they, you know, they can use our buildings for drilling at any time, we wanna work with them. We have had a little bit of, we've had some issues, especially at the high school with our fire alarm at this point. We are working to address them, and, you know, we thank them for their support and their patience, and, you know, I'll say this, and I've said this over and over again, especially to the young folks out there, it's important to give back to your community, and we actively encourage you to look into volunteering in the fire department or with the exchange ambulance, but we do know that these men and women, you know, when the alarms go off, have to respond, and we truly appreciate it, and we expect during, you know, we have, we've had some issues during construction, and we all, you know, we are looking to address them, and, bless you, Dr. Bells.
Bless you, Dr.
And again, it is summertime, a lot of exciting things coming, and we'll have a lot more to talk about, as Mr. Zachary alluded to, you know, in the upcoming meetings, getting ready for the 2022-2023 school year. So I'd like to thank everyone. We got through last year with, I think with flying colors. Graduation was a wonderful day, the moving up ceremonies were wonderful, and with that, I'd like to turn it back to Mr. Zachary, and again, thank you to our volunteer fire departments and to the exchange ambulance, and please, and we encourage everyone, if you have time, please support them and volunteer if you can. Thank you.
When you said summer was coming, I thought you were saying allergies have arrived, but apparently, we didn't go there. Yes, graduation was a great night, just a great way to end the year, it was a beautiful night, beautiful ceremony, great job by all those who gave the speeches, so, and then soon enough, we are here starting the new year, so, and again, looking forward to graduation and at the end of the year, because that's really the best day of the year, when we get to celebrate the kids who worked so hard to get there, so it's great stuff. Okay. Public comments on agenda items, agenda items only. Okay. Moving on. We resolve pursuant to Education Law Section 913, that instructional employee whose identity is known to the Board of Education is directed to report for examination or determine the capacity for such person to perform his or her duties, such examination will be conducted by Dr. Randall Solomon at his office located at 55 Wisconsin Highway, Port Jefferson Station, New York 11776, on a specific date in August at 9:30 AM, and during the subsequent days that Dr. Solomon may require. So I didn't say the date, because I don't, we don't need anybody showing us with that date and time at the office, we're giving the address and the date, so I think it would be inappropriate for personnel matter to give that date, but I assume the person is aware of the date, the one who's required to go.
Mr. Zachary?
Yes.
There was someone in the audience who does have an agenda item, he wasn't clear.
Sure.
Hi, should I step up?
Yeah, come up there.
Yeah, no, it's pretty simple. Hi, my name is Michael Fitzsimmons. My daughter just graduated, so I'm very proud.
Congratulations.
Thank you. My son is a ninth grader, and he's in special needs, so he, I've been part of CSI meetings and IEPs for my son. On 10/27, we have an appointment at Dawson Coordinators. I just wanted to find out who we're going to appoint, if we have candidates, and what that agenda's all about, and I just wanted to look into it, because I do have some issues. He's been bullied all year long, and it's kind of going through the system, which we know, which I know Mr. Dolan has done a great job of trying to contain it, but it's a serious issue.
Absolutely. I apologize that you're going through that. I apologize also, because I reached out to you, but I should've kept on reaching out more and more.
It was right around graduation time, so I...
No, not at all. Your phone doesn't take messages.
It's as busy as you.
It's all right. Fair enough.
Thank you.
As far as, I guess if we could talk to you about that?
Sure.
Maybe after the meeting?
Fantastic.
If we could discuss that?
Absolutely.
As it is an issue, very serious issue concerning your son and, you know, his special ed.
Absolutely, and I think that it's, and I won't get into the small details, but I think a lot of the kids, not a lot, but I think in that department, you get some taunting and bullying, which is unfortunate, so I think in a general broader picture, just now my son, with the broad picture, I just wanna find out what I can do, suggestions, listen to your guys' recommendations, and what we can do to contain it a little bit better, if possible, that's...
It is unfortunate, but it shouldn't happen ever, so...
Right. Zero tolerance is what we have, Mr. Dolan's been great on that, but it seems to be relentless sometimes.
Well, we will definitely discuss that then, and discuss specifically your child's situation with you.
Fantastic.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there more?
5.1 needed a motion. I don't know if you got that, Paul.
No, I think I just finished it.
Okay. Thank you.
We were discussing the date not being disclosed. All right, so, motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
We resolve that the Board of Education approves the memorandum of agreement between the East Islip Union Free School District and the East Islip Teachers Association instructional staff member, Michael Montori, as Intermail's advisor at the East Islip Middle School. Take it in motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye. We resolve that the President of the Board of Education is authorized to execute a Sixth Amendment to the agreement with KeyCon Services Incorporated extending the term of the provision of school security management consultation services for the period of July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2023. Take it in motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We resolve that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the resignations, terminations, leave of absence, position abolitions, employment appointments, tenure appointments, and salary changes in accordance with applicable provisions of Education Law and Civil Service Law as cited in the certified personnel attachment. Take it in motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Michael, this is your time to stand up. I hope I'm saying it correctly, but Michael McHoltz?
McHoltz, yep.
McHoltz is joining us as an elementary school teacher. Mike, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You know, you went through an arduous process, and this is a wonderful opportunity, and you're gonna be surrounded by, you know, wonderful people who will be your mentors, and remember, everybody you meet can help make you better, and choose your mentors wisely, but one of the things that came across that impressed us in the interview was your planning, your preparation, and your, you know, your commitment, and just if you make those three things the cornerstone of your career, you're gonna have a wonderful career. So welcome to the family, congratulations, and we look forward to 35 or 40 years of your service, so...
Welcome to the family. (APPLAUSE).
You didn't say you were gonna be at his retirement party.
Hey, Michael, I want you to pick me up on the way to your retirement party, and we're stopping at 7-Eleven, and you can get whatever you want, and then we'll go on to your retirement party together. I will be there, just to spite Mr. Zachary.
I took it as a sign you're starting to recognize your frailty. We resolve, we resolve that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the resignations, terminations, leave of absence, position abolitions, employment appointments, tenure appointments, and salary changes in accordance with applicable provisions of Education Law and Civil Service Law as cited in the non-certified personal attachments. Take it in motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
We resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, recommends the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items, 8.1 through 8.5, in accordance with the action presented for each item. Anybody want anything pulled from the consent agenda? Okay. Motion for the consent agenda.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I just see that there was a donation of a laptop on the consent agenda.
That was 8:15. No, it ended at 8:15.
8:15?
Yes.
Okay, so that's included, there we go. We resolve that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education accepts a donation of a Samsung Galaxy Tab A tablet and a MSI Alpha 15 Steel Series laptop for one of our college bound seniors from the Youth Enrichment Services. Guidance counselor Nicole Whiten reached out to Senator Phil Boyle for assistance, who then contacted her with the, with the Youth Enrichment Services. Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Ms. Whiten and Senator Boyle, for helping out for this very generous donation. We resolve that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the attached list of appropriation changes for the 2021-2022 school year. Take it in motion.
Motion.
Discussion. Second, anybody?
Second.
Discussion.
Steve, could you go over the second set of changes? Not the first salary change, the other one. The 2021, 22, 23 sheet? Like, I don't remember we're still doing it this way. Have we done this this way in the past? Like, how's this working now?
We're still sort of in between budget years, so we have some leftover budget appropriation changes for the 21-22 school year, and as we enter 22-23, we have changes for that, for the new school year as well. For instance, we borrowed money for the construction projects, projects both long and short term, but due to the nature and size of the borrowing, there were increased expenses that were not budgeted for, so that covers one of the 22-23 changes. In addition, there were students enrolled in charter schools for this school year that we were not aware of during budget prep, so we have to make accommodations for that as well.
What about the Forster student?
Similar situation. We were not aware at time of budget prep for last school year that there were students attending schools as Forster students, and their last known school was, or residence was East Islip Schools, so we're charged back for those expenses, and that's what that represents.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Old business. Any old business? Ms. Dolan, has RCK looking for the summer? We gonna get that done before school? Um, yes. Okay.
Oh, that was definitive.
Every word he says by definition is a promise.
Wait, what?
Yes, it's a promise. Okay.
All right. One second. We promise to get it done.
New business. Mr. Manzo.
Yes, Dr. Costa, our talent teacher, is proposing a trip to Italy in the spring of 2023. This trip coincides with April break, as you also, we also have a group going out to France as well during the same time period.
Great stuff. Great stuff. And Mr. Costa, they were knocking over people to get pictures of Mr. Costa at the high school graduation. Everybody wanted a picture of Mr. Costa, he's very popular, I hear, in the high school, and the kids love him, and I would imagine this is gonna be a great trip that a lot of kids are gonna try to go on, so I think it's great. Florence is great, I was able to do that when I was in school, and such a great thing to offer this opportunity to the kids, so, great that we're doing field trips, and nice field trips to Florence and Rome. Okay. Any other new business?
Can I just make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Two words. Trip insurance. I know it, you know, it's not necessarily something that we wanna talk about, I don't wanna jinx anything, but think about how far we've come, and we're trying to provide opportunities, but given the state of, just, trip insurance is not a bad idea.
Trip insurance is part of the payment, actually.
Yeah. You've come a long, long way. Don't even wanna open that can of worms.
I just have some new business. I was hoping that we could get an accounting of how much money we're spending on security. I know we have a contract with someone with the cameras, and then also the ancillary costs, if you can, like Steve, some sort of estimate about, you know, hours we're dealing with payroll, those kind of things, just to get a kind of an idea of how much we're spending. It doesn't have to be definitive, we just would like some sort of accounting for it, please.
New business?
We did get a lot of emails this week as far as the before and after program. I guess it was announced who was selected as part of the lottery. Bosie's runs our before and after school program, it is in our schools, it is, the payment goes to us, and then we give money to Bosie's. And we try to let Bosie's use our schools to help our parents who may need before and after school for their children. Apparently, they cannot accommodate everybody, now we will continue to work with them, or perhaps we can accommodate more, but just know, we, you know, the schools for the last at least six, seven years have not run, or, you know, school employees have not run the before and after school program. Our attorneys advised us there are some legal issues with it many, many years ago, so we allowed this third-party vendor to do it, to try to help out, but unfortunately, if it doesn't help out everybody, some are upset, but we'll do everything we can to assist Bosie's in allowing more of our parents to participate in that program, but our apologies, it is a third-party vendor, we are not in the daycare business, so we don't run it, but we'll certainly help as much as we can, our vendor, to run that program and expand it. Any other new business?
Just a couple of quick things. On childcare, everybody at this table, and I know I owe a couple, I made some phone calls today, but sometimes days of board meetings get upside down, and if I didn't get back to you today, feel free to call me tomorrow. Everybody at this table has been in the position of having to find childcare, and it's very difficult, and that's why we do have a lottery system, because the demand is greater than the seats, but as Mr. Zachary said, we'll work with Bosie's, and if we can, hopefully, do something, but if not, you know, we felt it was prudent to say something now rather than waiting too long, and it is a tough one, but, you know, we'll listen, and then we'll work together, and so hopefully, something good comes of it. And Mr. Carfluck mentioned something about security, and I think it was excellent, because I wanna commend our security department, because, you know, I remember when I got here, the place was deserted after school, deserted, and now it is a 24/7 operation, seven days a week. It's either somebody outside or inside, and we really have not, you know, we've added some to the security, but proportionally for the amount of activity, we haven't. We've juggled, and we've kind of moved things around, and we certainly would never short change in terms of security, and I do have some good news that I left out in my report. We are in the final stages of being linked to Suffolk County, and our computer system with theirs, our new computer system, so that should, you know, hopefully be done very shortly. I know the county's been pushing it, it was a big push right before COVID, but during, you know, COVID, it kind of got pushed to the wayside, but hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, our camera system will, you know, the police will be able to access it, so if there is a problem here, you know, as they roll up to school, they'll, they'll see lifetime what's going on in the school, so, you know, I'm glad Mr. Carfluck asked that question. And now, one last thing.
Wait, this is old business, yeah?
Oh, that's right. You forgot this is new business. All right, sorry.
No, it was new business.
It was new business. Yeah, but you said we're going back to old business. No, that was just teasing you.
Technically, it's old business.
All right, so we're back to old business. You know, if you had the opportunity and the pleasure of going to graduation, you know, they tease me, because graduation is my favorite holiday, even better than Christmas, you know, because you get to see the joy, you get to, you know, share a family's joy and not be obtrusive, they really don't even know you're there, it's like hiding in plain sight, but Miranda Stockton, our salutatorian, gave a speech, and in that speech, she brought our valedictorian to tears, because she started the speech off with, "Some people call second place the first loser," but she said, basically, I'm gonna paraphrase, "Kiara, I love you because you made me better." And I was just sitting there hoping and praying that they didn't want my job, because I'd have to give it to them, you know, and as a Superintendent of Schools, it's an interesting job, it really is, one that, you know, I do cherish. It's a little, you know, at times, it can be a little bit interesting, but to hear a young lady who was number two in her class say to the one who's number one in her class, "You made me better, you made me work harder," I think as a superintendent, as a parent, I couldn't be prouder, because there were two people who competed, competed hard, brought out the best in each other, and you see that all the time with kids, you know, whether it's a cross-country race, or the play, you know, or practicing for something, you know, we push each other to get better, and there's no doubt in my mind, you know, I came here in 2015, and this community was very patient, and, you know, very supportive, very enthusiastic and energetic, and we had a dream, we had a vision, and I do have to thank, you know, all the Board members, the ones that are here tonight, and then Mr. Montori, Mrs. Carney, and Mr. Behan, for what has been a wonderful, wonderful opportunity, but I'm at a point in my life, and as the Superintendent of Schools, it's very important to put the organization first. You know, we have done a lot as a team, and I stress that we, you know, the whole community. I've been fortunate enough to sit here, sometimes it's like playing quarterback. I always wanted to play quarterback, I just didn't have the talent. I always wanted to play quarterback, I just didn't have the talent. Um, you know, you get a lot of credit that you probably don't deserve, every once in a while, you get a little criticism that maybe you don't deserve. Um, but this has been the most incredible ride of what, and I say this to people all the time, but it's been the most wonderful career that I never thought possible. And just like, um, Miranda said to Kiara, you know, this community made me better. Um, but if I can't sit here and look out in the audience and say, "I'm going to be here for five more years or three more years" and make the vision come true, it's time to step aside. And, you know, this is a, you know, a tremendous community, we have a tremendous team here, all the employees, uh, you know, and so I informed the board last week and I informed my administrative team last week, um, you know, that I'm going to be given my six, six months' notice and I'm going to be retiring. Now, I'm not going away, you know, the Chamber of Commerce said I can still help them, the PTA said I can help them, um, you know, FDK said I can help them. Uh, you know, it's time for me to give a little bit back, but more importantly, it's time for me to step aside so someone can take this place to the next level. And I, I've said this over and over again, if I was 50 years old, and I'm not, but if I was 50, I don't know if I have the skill set to take this place to the next level. And that's, you know, and what this place needs, um, I know you're going to find it and I am going to love them and support them the way you will. And like I said, I'm not going away, but, you know, if you stay too long, you know, it would be an insult to what we, you know, what we dreamed in 2015. So, you know, I've said it before, I love East Islip. And, you know, it's kind of funny, you know, I will say this, she's going to kill me for saying it, but, uh, you know, my wife has been retired for five years and she wants to do stuff with me and I'm amazed and I'm, you know, very happy about that and so, uh, listen, guys, uh, I just want to upfront thank everybody and like I said, I have great faith in this board, they're going to, you know, do a wonderful job, they're going to do their search. I have a, all the faith in the world of the administrators and the teachers and all the support staff. And like I said, I love you guys and I'm not going away, I'm just going to take on a different role and that is going to be the biggest cheerleader that East Islip has, all right? So, thank you very much.
Well, a lot of people will be upset about hearing that news, nobody more than your wife, I would think.
There's no give backs, right?
But, yeah, no give backs, once you resign your contract, we're going to have the attorney sign off on it, you have to sign a lot of paperwork to make sure that it's, it's official. Uh, and also.
Have you ever seen my wife?
I, I've met your wife before, she's a beautiful young lady. And, um, yes, she does exist, uh, and I know Dr. Bell's is our head of HR, do we have any subpositions open that maybe Mr. Dolan?
I can find something for him.
Okay. The elementary kids would love him. Name his grounds. We have plenty of spots, Mr. Dolan, you can go on OLS, you can apply to any of them. By all means.
We always need help in the cafeteria during lunchtime.
We will make sure your resume gets on the right desk. Um, as Mr. Dolan said, it is six months, so fortunately, we will have him around the next six months and, uh, so we'll have plenty of time to discuss everything that he's done here in East Islip, but I, I wouldn't be remiss if I didn't mention just how this district was in 2015 when he came on, it's where it is today. And while he gives credit to the board and his team, and his team does a tremendous job, make no mistake, Mr. Dolan deserves a tremendous amount of credit for everything that's gone on here, uh, this, this is a different place. You know, it's funny, in 2014, when Mr. Karpplug and I got on the board, I remember at our meet the candidate night, talking about, you know, changing the culture here, the culture here was very bad eight years ago. Very negative, very, the community, the staff, just, just had a negative feeling to it. And Mr. Dolan came on board, um, there was a four-on-one vote that night at the board meeting and I'll point it out many times between now and then, I was the no. I wasn't here, so officially, it's a no, but I was, I was on the fence anyway, even if I were here, to be honest with you. Uh, and if you were to start his interviews, you would have been on the fence too. But everything he's done here since, uh, proves that that was, that, that one no, even though it wasn't official, uh, was probably the, the worst no that I've had here in, in eight years because I don't think anybody, certainly anybody else, we interviewed some tremendous candidates, some great candidates, but I don't know if anybody would have accomplished everything that he has here, uh, in every way. Uh, just from changing the culture here to very positive, bringing together this great team that we have here to, to our left and, and everybody else, uh, in this building and, and our schools, uh, Mr. Dolan had a say in, in all of them. He, he's definitely the, the one great influence that has made this place just such a different place than it was eight years ago. And he certainly deserves a big, big thank you and we'll discuss ways that we can thank him over the next six months as we continue to deal with him until he goes. So, um, thank you, Mr. Dolan, for everything you've done and again, you know, it's far from over, we, we got plenty of time to thank you, you got, you still have some work to do and, uh, we look forward to getting it done with you in the meantime and then, uh, I guess we'll, we'll discuss those other sentimental things as we get closer. So, Mr. Dolan, thank you very much.
Chris, thank you very much, thank you.
Any other new business, anybody's got anything to go after that? Yeah? Public comments?
Lauren Pelagi?
I'm going to go ahead so I can get all my fillings down. My name is Lauren Pelagi and I've been an East Islip resident for over 10 years. I'm very concerned with the lack of before care, childcare options in our district. I sent each of the board members an email this past Friday regarding this matter, I'm thankful that Mr. Wu responded to me today. For several years now, my children have been attending before care in both Temper Pointe and JFK, both when it was district ran and Bosse's ran. My children have attended full-time, five days a week. There are currently no other safe options to get my fourth grader to school. Both my husband and I work full-time. I am going to be leaving my house now in September at 7:00 AM because I'm going to be teaching in our middle school in Maspego and the JFK bus does not pick up my daughter Blake until 8:45. My workday starts an hour before that. The waitlist for JFK is long, I am number 15 out of 17. That does not look good or promising. Clearly, there needs, there is a need for this service. We pay almost 1,900 a year to attend. I am asking why cap at 40? Why do part-time students receive the same spots as the full-time students? Full-time students should be prioritized with securing a spot and what are going to be these alternatives for these children that don't get before care?
Yeah, like I said before, you know, Bosse's runs it, we don't run it, we try and, like you said, you have to be at work at 6:00 and for those parents, we, we be at work at 5:30.
100%.
So, we can't, you know.
Now, I get it.
Start the program at 5:30 or run till 8:00 at night when certain parents, so we try to let them run it so we can help out as many parents as we can.
And I understand that I have been fortunate.
We don't want anybody to be upset, but we'll continue to talk with Bosse's. I mean, Mr. Harrison, what are, have they spoken to you as far as what are the limitations of, or what we can do maybe to assist them to expand the program? I know we had the same issue last year.
Well, certainly, the program has been growing over the years, we expanded from two buildings in the, uh, PM session to all four buildings. With that came an increase in costs. Uh, we've asked Bosse's to, uh, analyze the, uh, space available to see if it's a possibility, uh, if, uh, more students can come into the program, so we're currently looking at that. Uh, we've seen a shift as well, as Mr. Zachary said, um, families are now keeping their students in the after-school program much later than they had in the past, so staff has to be there to accommodate that increased, uh, utilization, which means increased expenses as well. So, we are trying to deal with all the resources available, we're looking at the space and we will see what that study brings back to us.
You know, in years past, South Shore was an option for these kids, they were able to be dropped off here, they were bussed, they were picked up there, because I utilize that as well. I mean, there's just no safe options for these kids right now. I can't leave my nine-year-old home to get on the bus.
No.
Can't.
Um, are they offering the same amount of spots as before COVID? Because I'm sure after COVID, a lot less parents. Kids used it, obviously, the last few years, parents were home.
Right.
So, is it the same amount of spots, do we know that it was in 2020? Or did they reduce them after the COVID now? Do we need to?
It was reduced.
I don't know.
I believe we are offering the same number of spots that we did last school year, when we recently completed school year. COVID and because of social distancing, there were less spots available, but I believe it's the same number of spots that we offered this just past school year.
Regardless, we will speak with Bosse's as far as, and I know we did this last year too, as far as reducing our waitlist. Perhaps we may not be able to do the whole list, but whatever we can do to help an additional parent, even if it's just one or 10, whatever it is, whatever we can do, perhaps, you know, we'll continue to work on that, the sun obviously, you need to know as soon as possible to fly.
Yeah.
Uh, and in eight weeks, the kids will go back to school. So, um, you know, the board will certainly look into, and Mr. Harrison, if you could report back to us as far as Bosse's response and anything we can do on it to make increases in the spots. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen Junior?
Good evening, um, again, my name is Maureen Junior and I'm here as, as a parent, talking about before and after care. I'm a single mom and it just, it's just so many things that happened that when I received the letter that I'm on the waitlist, it was like. I called every mom, I'm like, what's going on, what's going on? And it just happened that I've paired up with, um, Lauren Pelagi and I was just like, what can we do, what can we do? And that's how we got here and I'm grateful for the opportunity that you guys, that you guys are working at. So, I appreciate that, so anything that, again, the help would be extremely helpful and I would honestly thank so much for listening.
No, I'll be, I know the feeling, uh, the pre-k lottery, you know, there were eight spots and I think my kids, I have 131 kids, I think I was number 115 and 131, the last thing I pulled out of the basket, so I went home and saw my wife and she was in tears.
A different alternative, that's just where we could look for, I mean, I was grateful to look into that, including daycare, because that is limited too. Like, just to say.
I mean, I've asked, you know, Facebook people ask as far as if anybody could come to the house for two hours, but obviously, this is, would be a better option for you. So, we'll do everything we can to work with the vendor to see if we can make it happen again, even if, I don't know where you want the list, but if it's not you, at least, there's as many people as we can on our end, what we can do for it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Vicentin has signed and, and correct the case, so you would be.
Yes, would you want to tell me anything else, Mr. Vicentin, or that's all?
No, that's fine.
All right, so we'll talk to you at the meeting, can you stick around?
That's it.
That's it? Okay, again, thank you, everybody, for coming down, um, I hope everybody had a great one. The next Board of Education regular business meeting, we held on Wednesday, holds on 24th, 22nd, at 7:00 PM once again. Can you get any motions? Home in favor?
Aye.
Guys, have a great summer, um, we'll see you in August and as far as moving forward, if the school people pass, if you could follow up, uh, with Mr. Dolan and whatever we can do, uh, we'll keep you informed of what's going on. Okay?